Hi, everyone. This is Davy McNally with the Athens City. Hi, everyone. This is Davy McNally with the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. This is the Accessibility Committee, and this is our June 10, 2021 meeting. We have myself, Noah Tremblay, Tiffany Beals, and Rob Delac from the committee. And we also have Jessica Paddin or A.D. joining us today.
A.D.
A.D. I get it. Yeah, I'm terrible with names. Sorry, Jessica.
Not a problem.
And we have a full agenda. It's great that you're able to join us today, Jessica. We have a few things that we wanted to go over, and we can go ahead and get started. First of all, I guess on the agenda, you know what, let's. We have minutes from last meeting that I believe were sent out. You know, I don't see that they were sent out, so let's, we can skip that and just go straight into the agenda. We'll approve the meeting minutes next meeting. So, yeah, we wanted to meet with you, Jessica, to talk about upcoming projects, talk a little bit about feedback on access during construction, and then talk a little bit about city parks, which is something we've been asked to look into later on this month, or this summer, sorry, this summer. And, yeah, just ways to kind of think about making city parks more accessible. So, I guess the first thing is just talking about the upcoming projects that are coming up, the big streetscaping projects and where we're at. And the last time we had that, we had provided some feedback and some guidance, including a word document that had kind of like the general recommendations. And, yeah, do you have any updates on some of those bigger projects coming up?
Yeah, the Uptown Improvements Project, we, the city advertised for a design firm, and those letters of interest have been received. And later in June, next week actually, we'll be meeting as a committee to select the designer. And then, design would move forward in the fall after city council provides some funding for that design. But that will be moving forward, is expected to move forward this year. So, we're getting closer on that one.
Okay. Yeah, sure. The actual project in Uptown would begin in 2022?
Probably 2023, it looks like. So, design through 2022 and then a 2023 construction.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, and maybe we could, yeah, if you think it would be a good idea just to have like a brief meeting with the, with the design firm to talk about accessibility within some of the components, especially like talking about, you know, with the crosswalks using stamped concrete instead of like bricks and how to do that and still make it aesthetic. What else did people have to add to that project? Any other thoughts? Would you say no? All right, was that delayed?
Yes, a bit. I think originally we had thought we'd have the consultant on board sooner and be able to start design work sooner. Just delayed, partially because students were not in session at Ohio University. And so, any pedestrian counts or traffic counts that we needed to complete would be a little bit skewed because of pandemic issues. And then, partially just workload for the committee completing the selection. So, we pushed it a bit later.
Okay. Yeah, we're, you know, working on this pretty far in advance. And, yeah, I think like our committee just wants to help, help the city kind of get the accessibility components right.
That's great. I think a meeting sounds perfect.
Okay.
So, I think the, yeah, meeting might make sense, but also, I guess, as early as you have design drawings, even if they're drafts, we're interested in reviewing them, I think, and see if we have any, any feedback earlier or it's better, I think, right?
Okay, that sounds good. Probably wouldn't have any of my guesses until maybe December or January, but that schedule will certainly be lined out. We get the designer on board, and then we can get the plans to the group for your review.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah, I think that's really valuable when you spend the time to do that. It's appreciated.
Okay, and then you're going to mention, I think you're transitioning into the Union project, maybe?
That's right. The West Union Street project, the next plans to middle is due in July. So, that's something that I can pass on once the city receives them. And that will be a 2022 construction, but it will probably start April, May 2022 if bidding is successful.
Wow, you're definitely keeping busy. One project right up for another, it seems. It's only going to be done in November, March, right?
Right.
Next big project's already starting in the spring. It's pretty crazy.
Yeah, hopefully it starts in the spring. It's, I think people are finding bidding a little bit challenging right now for some of the projects.
Cost of equipment and that kind of thing?
Cost and just availability of contractors as maybe some of the work was pushed off from 2020 delayed till now. And we're seeing really some delays in bidding.
Okay, yeah, it seems like some pent-up like demand, it's kind of like combining with, you know, money being available now. Yeah. And it's very, it's always great working with the city too. I mean, it's great that you're able to get like the grants to be able to do this work. And, yeah, we're just excited to really see these things done and done well. So, yeah, it's going to be cool.
I have one more thing to add, if that's okay. So, the plans are one aspect of us being involved. And I think that one thing that we have learned with the Stimson Avenue project that's going on right now is that plans are one thing, but then also like during construction, the activity also needs to involve some conversation of accessibility as well because Stimson is really, really troubling right now in terms of accessibility. And so, I guess, just kind of thinking about like what will construction look like and how will things remain fairly accessible during the construction process? So, just kind of keeping that in mind as we are looking forward to these upcoming projects as well. Because I know that that's one of the things that we've been talking about the past couple of weeks is the Stimson Avenue project and what can we do about it? Is there anything that can be done right now? So, rather than kind of be talking about these things in the future, you know, if we can pre-plan for that, if there's some way that we can be involved in that ongoing as we're coming into the projects, I think that could be helpful to have on our radar as well.
That's a good suggestion, Tiffany. Absolutely. I think, I think we're learning a lot from the Stimson project right now and trying to maintain one section of sidewalk open. And it is very difficult with all the utilities that they've had to install and tighten. And there's difficulty in maintaining hard surface right now, which I'm sure is causing, causing issues. I don't know what other issues you guys are finding. But I'd be really happy to discuss it and then take that back to the contractor and see what, what they can do to improve.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So, I was going to say that I think part of it likely is the way the contractor implements things might be different than what the city anticipated. And some things, some things may have been decided prior, but I think, I was just writing by, the, end of Stimson at Carpenter and East State, and Sam Proll, city council member, was out just sort of looking around. And I stopped to chat with him, and he was looking at, you know, the pedestrian access along the sidewalk there, even just to go by the project, not down the street. You know, the sidewalks are torn up, the road's torn up. That's just going to be a huge problem. But even just getting by the project on the streets that aren't being torn up are sort of a problem too. And I think partly it may be the way there's signs on the sidewalks or blocking access. Maybe it's, that's not really necessary. So, you may hear from Sam as well. I think he said he was going to contact you.
Okay.
As you're coming from Uptown down East State, and would go straight to Stimson normally, right? There's a crosswalk on the left that's just shut down, no signal anymore. And people still are crossing there because it's the easiest way for them to cross in most cases. But now they don't have a crosswalk, even helping do that. So, I think it's even a little more dangerous now because of those kind of things. And it's already, for me to say this, I think probably the most dangerous intersection pedestrian in the county. At least when you look at how many crashes have been over the last 10 years. So, there might be some adjustments that will help, I think, make it more safer during construction.
Okay, and that, I think our internet was breaking up a little bit, Rob, but I heard a crossing concern near East State Street. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so I'm in a car, if you can't tell.
Oh, I got it.
Even though it looks like I'm in the Bailey's. So, yeah, the cross, the crosswalk that's turned off, the signals recovered.
Okay.
A bit of a concern. I understand that cars turning left, it makes it easier not to have people there. Cross, because it's the easiest place for pedestrians to cross. And so, now they're doing it without the signal to help them. And I think there's, so I think that's a big concern.
Yeah, and just to follow up on what Rob's saying, he's breaking up a little bit because he's in the Bailey's trail right now. It is bad. The crosswalks to cross the street are turned off or kind of, you know, turned off intermittently. There's not signage to say like, how, how do you get down Stimson? If you need to, if you like live there, if you, you know, need to get to a business or something going on there, there's not like a sign, especially accessible sign that says like, here's the route. I think that's because there is no accessible route right now. That is kind of like, you know, an ADA requirement during, during construction is signage with pathways, with curb cuts. I know a lot of like the sidewalks torn up. So, you know, having those like big metal like things that cross those sections. And, you know, at times during construction, there is not a safe passageway. And if so, just having a sign that says like, from this state to this state, no one's getting across this section because the whole utilities are getting torn up and replaced. And there's not a good way of doing it. And if that's the case, then, you know, alternative routes.
Okay. I haven't on, oh, sorry, Davy. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Sure. And just my final thought on that is, just from what we've brought up as in the committee meetings over the last couple of months is, yeah, just as we go forward with the, with the future projects, as Tiffany was saying, just to make sure that the contractor knows that that's an expectation to put those things together, to not, you know, yeah, to know that that pathway and signage is important.
I have an onsite meeting with them tomorrow, and I will send them a summary of these notes. It's something that we've discussed and discussed regularly. They do have an ADA coordinator for the project, and I'll request they come down and make another site visit to give recommendations for, for improving the access through the site.
Okay, great. Yeah, we appreciate that. And let us know if they have any additional questions about it, what people are experiencing. We can share that. But, yeah, it's just that, that pathway is, is something that's, you know, important to have built into the projects. We talked about Union, we talked about Uptown, we talked about, so that was kind of the third bullet point that we had for you today, Jessica, which was, or the second one, I guess, be is feedback on access during construction. And I think that would even help for, you know, bicyclists, other pedestrians, just knowing like, hey, I can, I can get to this business, or I can get to this place, or, or no, I can't. Or, you know, if, if, if there's like parking in a certain place that's available, I guess just like those kinds of things would be really helpful.
Okay. Well.
Anything else on those first few points before we move on to City Parks Committee for the rest of the committee? Did you have anything else, Tiffany?
I don't think so. I think that was it.
Okay, great. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on into city parks. And I just got a message that Anna, who is joining us as an attendee, but I just asked her to be put in as a panelist, so hopefully that'll happen in the next four minutes. Thank you, Scott and Ryan, for all your help.
Great, check out John Keel's Big Stop.
Oh, where is that? Is that next to the brewery off in Stimson, Noah? I was trying to figure out how to get to the brewery the other day, and I just couldn't. I just wasn't sure, so I went somewhere else. And Anna just joined us. Anna, are you able to hear us and talk? You want to try out, try out talking to make sure it works?
Yes, hi. Thank you. Thank you for letting me join. I'm going to keep my video off because I'm watching my son, and it'll be very, very distracting.
Okay, anything, is there anything that you had to add based on the first few points of discussion so far, Anna?
No, not, not at this time.
Okay. And then you, you may have some thoughts on the next point, which is city parks and accessibility. So, Arianne Smedley, who is the city council representative for the West Side Parks, had asked us to maybe do like an audit over there sometime this summer. So, we're planning on doing that in August. Hopefully, it'll stop, stop raining by then. But, yeah, what we're, what we're planning to do is just kind of focus on, you know, parking, accessibility of playground equipment, accessibility of pathways and grounds, and, and that kind of thing. I guess we were wondering, who, who would oversee that within the city? Would that be you, or would that be Terry Moore?
Terry Moore, she's, she would oversee parks. She has coordinated with us to include some parking lot improvements as part of the annual paving project. But that doesn't address all the, all the concerns that you just listed.
Okay, yeah, I think, one of the things that we, I think, would really like to address, a lot of the parking spots in the park system aren't actually like, you know, ADA accessible. Thinking of like the one at the, at the Richland Park, you can, it's, I call it kind of like, you know, not, not a van accessible spot. And since that's the only one that's available there, it should be van accessible, which means that there should be, every, if it's 14 or 16 feet, like with the spot and the glue stripes next to it. I know Noah knows this off the top of his head. Is it 14, Noah, or is it 16? Maybe, maybe you don't. Okay, 16? I think it's 16. And, yeah, there's not, there's not like enough space next to it if you drive like a wheelchair accessible van or if you just need that amount of space to like unload a mobility device from your vehicle. So, that's something that, yeah, I guess as, as the city does the restriping or improvements, I think a good example is the West State Street Park over by the pavilions. There, there are accessible spots that have the correct width. How does that, how does that bidding work, or how, how do those spots get striped? Do you, do you know that, Jessica?
Um, well, they, they'd be striped either, some of the, some of the spots have been striped in the past by city crews. I don't know which, which ones in particular. I know the pool parking lot was stripped by the contractor. So, for this, with the work that Terry Moore coordinated with the annual paving project, it's an alternative to resurface some of the West State Street Park parking lots and then restripe. And that would be completed by a contractor. But, but the city does have capability to paint parking spots, something I can look at with the parks crew and see what needs to be changed, how significant of an effort it would be. And if it's something we could do in-house, we could help with that.
Okay, great. Yeah, and the striping, yeah, I think maybe another two spots somewhere else could be switched into like a spot with striping as well. That's not, not like a particularly hard thing to do on the Richland side. And, yeah, I think it would be, it would be nice to have like one van accessible spot and one just regular accessible spot. Because I know a lot of times like a grandparent will come with their kids and have an accessible placard, so then they'll, they'll take that spot. So, it's nice to have one other spot available. And then in terms of playground equipment and everything, I think that would be more like within the city parks and rec department, right? Okay, so we'll, we'll start having those conversations with them as, as we move closer to the summer. What other issues were we wanting to talk about?
In my opinion.
Sorry, one more time?
Sales Park is very dangerous, in my opinion.
The parking?
Sales Park is very dangerous, in my opinion. Sales Park is very dangerous, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I wonder if you're talking about the parking or the sidewalk that was built that's accessible, but it's maybe a little steep to go up the hill. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to.
And, but, and now you can tell us then, but I think one thing with Sales Park is the parking spots, they're two accessible parking spots, but there's no striping next to it. So, I definitely had instances where I'll park there, and then someone will just like say that they're like temporarily parking and end up blocking me in. Or that kind of thing. And then getting up, it is accessible. But Noah may be talking about like the sides of the sidewalk. Yeah, the sides of the sidewalk have some drop-offs on either side of it. And, yeah, I think for, for people who have like, either like visual issues where maybe they like don't see the drop-off, they could like step off of the, of the curb, or if there's like, you know, some shakiness in terms of like driving a wheelchair or something. Okay, so Noah's shaking his head, so I'm getting this right. Okay, good. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, that could be something, you might have more knowledge about that, Noah, but I, there, there is also an accessible picnic table at the top of Sales Park, which is nice. And I do use that a lot, but to get there, I think you have to be able to judge like, you know, the sides of it. Did that kind of cover everything, Noah? Okay. Yeah, and I think just in general, like the, the parking, striping is a problem throughout Athens. People will put in an accessible spot, and it'll just, you know, be a standard spot that just has a, an accessibility placard in front of it, which, you know, that's fine. But you have to first, like your first spot has to be a wheelchair accessible ADA spot. And then after an additional like 30, 40, whatever the amount of spots is, then you could, you know, then you can put in an additional one that's not van accessible. But I think people will often just put in like the one accessible spot that's not van accessible. So, I think that's a problem throughout Athens and something that we hope to address through this committee. Let me pull up our agenda. Anything else that we had on parks, city parks?
Well, one thing in addition, can you hear me okay now? A little better than before?
Yes, thank you.
Turn the video off, maybe it'll help, is getting to the parks. And that is more of what Jessica would be concerned about or more of her realm. There was discussion about West Side, getting to the West State Street Park. I thought that I saw something right after the discussion, that there's a project to build a sidewalk on that road. Is that right, Jessica, or can you fill me in on that, by any chance?
There was a proposal to complete accessibility improvements to the park. It wasn't, the grant funding wasn't, it wasn't approved, but it's still something that's on the, on the radar, is to build a complete sidewalk. I know there are some parking lot issues also to go down to West State Street Park. So, the grant that targeted wasn't funded, but it's still on the radar.
Okay, well, that's good to hear that it's still something on the radar screen. Sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't funded though. And so, would that be a sidewalk on the north side of the road? Is that the concept there?
Yes.
That's, that's what makes sense. I think that's exactly right. I think I mentioned that during one of the public meetings about the West State Street project was that bringing the traffic through there to the connector on Here it, Here it Street is how it's called, would make it more difficult for people to navigate that street as a pedestrian or cyclist, or as a child. And that, that sidewalk on the north side really is, I think, an important improvement there. So, it'd be good to see that. And I think Arianne had mentioned also that she was concerned about that issue, so.
That does make sense, Rob. That's a great point. And that sometimes on the, on the West, on the West Side Park, there's, yeah, just issues of walking, like walking around one side park because there's like curb cuts, and then there's not a sidewalk to be able to get up and down. And there's the concession area. Yeah, there, there's a lot of potential issues there. And I think, I think we'll be able to look at them a little bit more in-depth when we go and meet with Terry as well. Okay, great. Just looking through my notes to see that I'm catching most of what's said. Also, in the mountain, people can help me if I miss things. And then, so this is, anything else that we should add on while we have Jessica here? All right, thank you, Tiffany.
I can't think of anything else.
Okay, yeah, Jessica, we really appreciate it. Another project that we're working on, and we're trying to do this in conjunction with City Code as well, is just to, to put out like, you know, seven things that businesses can do right now to make things more accessible. It really goes right along with some of the things we're talking about, which is, you know, putting up signage that tells you what they offer and how to get in and that, what number to call if you need accommodations. And secondly, just readily achievable barrier removal because there's a lot of things that businesses don't realize that they could do that don't cost a lot of money, that would make a big difference in accessibility. So, yeah, we're hoping for that. Any questions for us, Jessica, or anything that we're missing?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I had a couple of other updates for the group. One is about stair removal on Second Street. I know that's one of the steeper streets in Athens, but we're working on removing the stairs and creating just a sidewalk. but we're working on removing the stairs and creating just a sidewalk only on one side of the street that that will hopefully move forward this summer. Um, and then the other update I had was the paving project is out to bid. And included in that are requests for bids for some curb ramp replacements for some of the really problematic areas on the on West Union, the the one that you guys have been mentioning that's on there and some on East State Street. So hopefully those will move forward this year.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah.
Not that this is important to this group, but pre-pandemic, I was beginning to talk to city on parks on another project that I was working on separately from this group.
Yeah, the the curb cut replacement, which which, do you know which intersections those are?
For State Street. Um, I think I can send you the list after the meeting. One is, I think it's May Avenue where there's, it's right adjacent to a crosswalk and there's no like proper curb ramp and it hits right into a hole. That's one of them.
Yeah, I appreciate seeing the list if you could send it, that would be great.
Yeah, that's better than putting you on the spot. Okay.
Yeah, I can send that out after the meeting.
That's for you, you State Street and and Union as well?
And Union. Um, so we didn't have a hu- huge budget, but we'll get these numbers in and then see what else we can do. Hopefully get these put back to standard and improve them and then.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great. There's definitely a lot of curb cut issues throughout the city. So I think just just doing a few, you know, just getting as many done as we can is great.
Yeah, I can also, the streets that are paved, they have curb ramps. Those curb ramps are updated with the paving, and so I can send you that list too.
Okay, great.
You're done.
All right, well, thanks. Thanks very much for meeting with us, Jessica. It's always always great to have you have you in the in the meetings with us. So we'll maybe plan on doing another one. And yeah, it might it might work whenever the Uptown drafts start to be completed in December and or January this year or next year. Maybe that could be our next planned meeting, so. And yeah, we we always like having you here as like the engineer, because so much of what you do involves accessibility. So we we appreciate working with you, Jessica.
I really appreciate working with everyone too and and for your feedback. I will follow up on the Stimson Avenue project next week. I'll get an update from the contract. I'll meet with them tomorrow. Okay.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for including me. Please not. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye. All right, there is still a quorum. Anna has just kind of joined us here. Did you have any like questions or comments about about that? That's kind of like what we try and do every like four to six months is just to to invite the the city engineer to to talk through projects and make sure that what we're getting done is is accessible as possible.
Yeah, that's great. I have no questions. I have have been following that like in the background. So I'm just taking it in right now, but no questions on that.
All right, now let's move on to our next agenda item, which is working with the Communications Committee to roll out signage and readily accessible barrier removal with Chamber of Commerce. So this is something, so we filled out one of those forms for communications. And what we're hoping for is for them to kind of put together a, you know, a sample signage for businesses to use to say, it it's exactly what we talked about in the last accessibility committee meeting, which is a sign that businesses can put in their front window or or at their entrance saying, uh, here's how you get in, here's who you call, here's how you call if you need an accommodation. And yeah, it's really really is as simple as that. Um, the second part is presenting to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, maybe starting out with the Uptown Business Association Chamber of Commerce to talk through. Because I think, you know, we have kind of like two towns. We have Uptown Athens and then we have like Downtown Athens, which is generally, you know, more accessible. You're dealing with a lot of less old buildings. Um, so but, you know, Uptown is kind of like the center of Athens and we want that to be accessible as well. So, um, I know Noah, I think you're going to that meeting tonight or Carolyn. Okay, so yeah, if you want to just kind of like explain what we're looking for. And then.
What meeting? What meeting is that? Is that open to the public?
Yeah.
Communications meeting tonight.
What did you say, Noah? Yeah. Okay. So Noah is going to be at the communications meeting tonight to ask. So that's the Communications Committee for the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. Basically to, because they they kind of have like the the know how to make like a good a good sign, to put the accessible Athens logo on it so people know what they're looking at when they look at the sign. And yeah, just.
I was gonna say, so after the last meeting that I attended, the the walk and roll, um, where I think it was Diane who went over the like seven steps of how to become more accessible. That's part of what you're talking about, right? I was thinking like, what if, what if some, you know, attractive, well-designed, one-page document that has a snazzy title like, you know, the seven steps to better accessibility. And obviously, there's a lot more than those seven steps. This is more, like you said, readily and low cost. But that outlines those things. Because if I recall, it's about like signage, maybe like a affordable transferable ramp. I forget what the actual seven were. But having that, something that actually not just about signage, but those seven things, and then that's blitzed out to businesses, like either through the Chamber of Commerce, you know, newsletter and or people just the Communications Committee like canvassing um, either Facebook pages or like literal physical copies to businesses. I don't know if that's come up as an idea, but that's something that could be proposed to the Communications Committee if you guys think that's a good idea. And the reason I'm bringing it up is like I just went to a business last week and said, oh, have you thought about? It's a, I'm not going to name the business, but it's an awesome business and it's accessible in many ways, except there's no ramp and it's an elevated step. Like a couple of steps to get into it. And I, this is my second time asking, oh, have you looked into, you know, getting a ramp for this business? And he said, oh, yeah, we're looking into it, which is exactly what he said a year ago when I asked. And I said to him, do you need like tools or resources or like phone numbers to call to help you build a ramp? And because I just think a way to empower businesses and giving them as many tools as possible would go a long way. So, um, I I guess I'm just wondering like how far that Communication Committee could go in some kind of one pager for businesses and whether it would go anywhere? What you guys think of that?
I'm I'm going to go and share my screen and just share what we had requested, uh, which we had requested that this, the seven things businesses and programs can do to improve access be turned into a brochure that we could hand out. And then you're right, the second step after this would and after this presentation would then be saying like, yeah, here's a list of contractors. The city already has a list of contractors that do that kind of work. So it would be easy just to give that as well at the same time. But yeah, the seven things are when the main entrance isn't accessible, post a sign in your window. If a building has one or two steps, a movable ramp should be placed at the entrance to allow someone to come in.
Perfect. So you already, how do you, you guys have already discussed like making this like an attractive, like easily readable pamphlet for businesses, like digital and print?
Yeah, that's what we, so yeah, we're trying to work like across committees. So our Communications Committee with the Disability Commission is planning to do this. And Noah is gonna go to that meeting tonight to just kind of make sure it's what that what they're putting together is what.
Code Office to developing this.
Sorry, I missed the beginning now. One more time.
Code Office to developing this.
Yeah, I'm working working with Code Office as well. And we we hope to have David Riggs at our next meeting to talk about, you know, sending an actual letter with this information from from the city with these two documents. Here here's what we have so far for the accessible for for the signs for businesses. So you can see it's like very basic, just kind of like what we would like to have on there.
So you're hoping that Communication Committee, like through their talents, could doctor this up to something more?
Exactly.
Readable. Awesome. That's great.
Uh, yeah, we're hoping we'll distribute these through the chamber, but as well through City Code Office.
That's great, the City Code, because that probably would have more weight, I guess, coming from them.
Exactly. So we we would sign it, but also like David Riggs would sign it. Maybe like the mayor would sign it. It's it's just a way to to show like, because, you know, we're not, we're not just like a, we are like a committee that's, you know, advocating for people with disabilities, but we're also a committee, a commission of Athens city government as well. Um, and ha- having those two things together and at the forefront will hopefully help these places like see see the importance of it. So, yeah, we we're trying to put a lot of like thought and and just like try and think of building some momentum behind it. Uh, but I I think we're like nearing the end of the planning stage and moving into the action stage of getting some, uh, some meetings set up at the next Uptown Business Association or the full Athens City Chamber of Commerce. And then just kind of moving out from there into into places that maybe aren't captured by that.
Yeah, and even thinking like county event. I mean, that's not you guys or city, but like the county, county businesses in general would benefit also from this pamphlet. I wonder if you guys would share it with the county government channels?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that that's one thing that we see ourselves as like, you know, not just things that are happening within the city, but things that happen outside of the city that people from the city go to. So we've been involved in like, I I know it's done a lot of work with the Nelsonville Music Festival to, you know, help make those improvements. So it's, yeah, it's just kind of like one, one step at a time for some of it. Yeah, and thanks for doing that now. I can't make it tonight to the Communications Committee, but I'm glad glad you're able to. And you'll you'll do great. Any other additional thoughts on that, Rob or Noah?
I think this is looking great. Definitely a good initiative and it looks like we're moving forward. That's that's excellent. You guys are doing great work.
All right, great. And then, um, the the last thing on our agenda is we we had had a meeting with the mayor's staff. So that includes Jessica and the other, I think, eight to twelve people that are on the staff, the leadership staff for the city about accessibility and disability issues within the city of Athens. I was very sick that day and did not make it, but Noah was there. Dan was going to talk a little bit about it, but Diane's traveling today and and not able to make it. But we shared we shared everyone's concerns. Yeah, if you have, if you have something in doubt, I can kind of share what what we were planning to talk about, which was a lot of what we talked with Jessica today is, um, you know, working during construction on making things more accessible, um, having accessibility yearly goals on the yearly plan. So we reviewed, I think, the 2019 and 2020 city plans for each of the each of the departments of city government. And there there were, there were some accessibility features mentioned, but we felt like, excuse me, making a clear, um, clear goals as what each of those departments were working on uh, towards accessibility as part of those goals. Uh, so we we gave that feedback. Um, we did a presentation as to what the City Commission on Disabilities has been working on over the last few years, um, everyone who's participating. And yeah, from from everything I've I've heard, it went really well. And I think we're planning on on just making that a regular occurrence where we go into those leadership meetings and and make sure to present about, you know, what what the what their priorities are. And I believe that maybe why the curb cuts are are being done as well. Because if if we still have sidewalks that don't have curb cuts in the city of Athens, then we are way, way behind. And I think there are a few that were identified that did not have curb cuts or, you know, very poor curb curb cuts, so. Um, yeah.
I don't have the nose in front of me.
Okay, the the other major thing that we talked about is there's not, like Jessica talked about for the project on Stimson, there is an ADA coordinator who is employed by the contractor to work on ADA issues. But within the city, there's not that. There's not one person that you go and talk to. So each of these leaders of each of these staff, yeah, the police, the fire department, city engineer, Code Office, all all the other departments, they're they're each kind of tasked with just doing ADA stuff on their own. And oftentimes, they they're not that knowledgeable about it. So we made some pretty strong recommendations for training, some additional training in each of these departments to, you know, not not just us doing this, because, you know, we're not like, most of us aren't professional trainers at least. Uh, but there are some really great trainings that are available through some of the Centers for Independent Living, the Great Lakes Commission. And what we're hoping is that each of the departments really, you know, make sure that their staff are trained on accessibility and disability issues. And then we can follow up, um, you know, on on the meetings every every quarter or six months, whatever ends up being decided on that, to make sure that these trainings are being implemented as well throughout the city. So there, there, yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I thought it was, it it was a great idea just to be able to to get in there and and talk to people who maybe work for city departments that don't have accessibility at the forefront of their mind all the time, uh, to to just, you know, remind them what a priority it is. Okay. So our next meeting, any other points to that? But we just wanted to give an update as to kind of what we talked about in general. And as you have things that that come up that you would like the city to address, you can always use the City Source app. Um, that's us, but also people in the community. You just download it on the App Store and make reports. There's an accessibility feature within that. And you can also present that to this committee or to the commission. And we'll make sure that this gets talked about with, you know, whoever it is at the city that needs to get talked talked with. So that is what we have today. That is what we have today. Anything else that, any announcements?
So I guess just to add on to what you were just talking about, the uh, the Athens City Source app, it's definitely been getting a lot of use, uh, that's increasing. There's been some specific requests about accessibility in there. I think Diane has put a couple of them in, and there's been good dialogue. It's even happened back and forth with the Code Office saying, oh, yeah, we looked at that, you know, so the it it seems to be working, I think is the key. But one thing I've noticed is that if you use the accessibility designator, that helps, I think, get the attention of the right people. Um, I tried to submit something that was street, a street issue, not specifically accessibility, and it hasn't gotten any traction. I haven't got any response in over two weeks. Uh, so I I think that making sure we tag it as an accessibility issue is the right way to get the attention of the city staff.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I think as as like, you know, I'm starting to get out and about more and go into more businesses and everything, so it's something that I plan on using a lot more just to to make those reports if something's not working or accessible, so so thanks, thanks for letting us know, Rob. All right, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? Noah's got it. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, all in favor?